I'm gonna call this meeting of the ordinance committee to order January 27th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely due to COVID-19 restrictions. And we don't have any minutes to approve, since this is our first official meeting besides organizational meeting.
Hey Salem.
And we don't have any public here for the one. My thought for tonight, yeah.
Oh, uh, yeah, you were just, you lagged out for a second. You're back.
Okay, am I back?
Yeah.
Okay, I got the, your internet connection's unstable. Yeah, Lindsay.
Um, but Barb said I'm supposed to do minutes from the joint public hearing as well, is that right? Yeah, I went on, I went on and I wasn't thinking about that during the meeting and I went on, the video's not posted yet, just to get like the details, so I'll, I'll.
You have thirty days, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, don't stress too hard on that. Um, but you know, what I was thinking for tonight was, I was thinking, since we have you in the committee, Lindsay, it would make sense to maybe talk a little bit about the ordinance review committees, recommendations, um, just to kind of like, maybe give an overview of, um, of what you guys did and, I was thinking that would be a good starting point for us, so we could like make a game plan, because I imagine as I was looking at it, um, we haven't talked about it at all, but as I looked at it, I, like, there's some, some of them are just no brainers, like, super, super easy, like, we can just, easy, easy, and some of them we just need to, you know, we'll need to strategize a little bit about. And, uh, and I wanted to get you caught up on where we're at with vacant storefront ordinance, um, as well tonight. And then I figured that what we could do from there is set two meetings, one to, you know, really hammer into the, um, ordinance recommendations, and just have them as a package, so we can, um, you know, bring all of them forward. And then, uh, another one to really start putting work in towards the, um, towards the vacant storefront ordinance. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, sounds great.
Perfect. So, I don't want to put you on the spot. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Just, so I was also on, uh, the, the ordinance review committee, and just one thing is like, I, I think it'd be great to have a meeting where we dig into it, but just with all of the recommendations that we have, I feel like, the, I mean, Lindsay, let me know if you disagree with me on this. Sort of the, the, the thought that I, that I had coming out of here is like, these weren't necessarily going to be things that we all get done in like a, a batch. It might be that like, you know, it's like we pick them up, like, maybe we, we identify a couple that we work on and then, once we got something done, we identify a couple more. Some of them are really easy and we could just get done like very, very quickly. Some of them are like, you know, gonna be like more involved conversations.
Sure. And I, and I think, I think that if we have a dedicated meeting for that, we can pick out the, the, the low hanging fruit, and bring those forward, and then we'll just have like the, the meaty ones that we can dig into after. So it just, just to kind of like clear the plate a little bit. Sounds good.
Yeah. Cause some of them are just language, um, like keeping swine. And some of them need a, you know, more specific, some of them we'll probably need to reach out to somebody about. So those will be the ones that won't be as easy.
Yeah, because it seems like the, um, in the wage theft ordinance, the thing about the veterans, that like that, is a state piece, right? It's from, like, it's state language, so, that part was like reaching out to our state reps to see if they could make that language more inclusive. Is that correct? Or am I, is that something we could do locally in defense?
I think that the thought that we had was to maybe seek, uh, you know, when we have the budget for it, seek, uh, like solicitor, uh, feedback on how that, how that interacts with the state language and like what actual leeway we have there. And, yeah, that's true that like, um, we could always, like, the, the output from that, if the answer is like, no, there's really nothing we can do right now. The output might be to reach out to the delegation. Um, but I think that the first thought was just to be like, what, like, what leeway do we actually have locally?
Can we broaden it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that was unclear.
Yeah, generally, you know, the, um, we can be more, as ordinances go, generally we can be more restrictive, but we can't be more inclusive as it relates to state things. But I think it does make sense to have the solicitor look at that, cause that, you know, this might be a different type of situation. But, um, yeah, so, and then, um, you know, so anyway, so that's, that seemed like the biggest, medias one. Was there any other like, um, pieces in there that stood out to you guys that you thought we wanted to, um, kind of pull out from the, the low hanging fruit?
Um, I think chapter five, um, like most of it's outdated, so it would just take a little bit more, um, kind of thought, like, do we, like, what do we want to do about garage sales? You know, it's not just like, we have to get some other input from Barb and other people.
Yeah.
I agree that the garage sales, it seems like one that, that I'd prioritize just because, from Barb's feedback, the current system of, of licensing, like.
It's not working.
It's, well, yeah, it's just, it's a lot, it's like a bunch of paperwork and the chart.
For five dollars or something.
It's like five dollars, so it's like, it doesn't even make sense, because we're like paying someone way more to do this, like this processing than we're actually getting out of it.
And it's not really enforced, like, when people don't do it, so it's just like.
Yeah.
Like, really, like, uh, like real do, like, follow the rules type people, like, go in, do the pay five dollars and.
And then like ninety percent of the people don't, and they're just hanging their signs on telephone poles.
Yeah, they don't, it's like, they don't even know. Like, I think I had garage sales, like, pre-city government, I didn't even know you were supposed to pay five dollars.
Right. Okay, so that's a good one to, to put on the list. Um, let me see, I'm, I'm trying to listen.
There's also something about signs, um, chapter eight, like, there was a lot of, like, wording about signage that we didn't know was relevant, or, and the ones that only, the whole chapter eight, like, it only relates to nonprofits, and like, you can't, do she, you, I think it was something like, you aren't allowed to see it from a park, or, I, I don't know, it was like, just needed a little, it needed a little bit more fleshing out.
Right, and is that where we were, um, trying to see if I can find that spot, because.
Chapter eight.
Eight point seven six, uh, only nonprofit organizations.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so I think that's, we spent, I spent, I think maybe three years on the sign or.
Oh gosh, okay.
It was a really, because it was, we did like our city collaborative kind of approach with it. And it was a long drawn out process, and then, you know, honestly, one of the things that we're gonna have, we, if we choose to do it this time, you know, we're gonna have to go back and look at that whole sign ordinance, because, um, there was a Supreme Court decision after we passed it, that changed the whole parameters around signs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, basically, all sign ordinances in America are now unconstitutional and unenforceable.
Yep, that's exactly right.
It's almost like, like, a lot of these ordinances are going through it, you kind of wish there was like a paragraph of like intent next to it, like, what were the problems were you trying to solve? Cause sometimes I find like, like, if, like, there's different ways to go about it, like, sometimes you go into it and you're like, how can we wear this? How can we make sure it like works? And then, without stepping back and like, do we even need this? Like, is there a problem that this is solving, or are we just trying to fix language on something that's not even needed? So, I think when we look through it, we need to use that lens, like, is this problem that it was probably trying to solve, isn't even a problem anymore?
Right. Well, it was funny, because the, the sign ordinance was, um, triggered by Landry Furniture. I don't know if you guys remember Landry Furniture.
Button Building?
When they were going out of business for like five years.
Yeah.
They put signs all over town, all, like, in other, like, on the side of the road, like, all over the place. And so that was one of the things that, like, really sparked the debate, so.
There was one, I'm just looking through my notes from the ordinance review, because it feels like it was a million years ago.
Yeah.
Summer. Um, one thing that, uh, I remember, it's, it's pretty mind-blowing, but there's a couple committees that they say that in order to be a member, you have to be a registered voter. And we thought that there could be a person who has a green card, but they're not, you know, so we just thought maybe that should just be resident, or maybe they're seventeen, but they're.
No, it wasn't even resident, actually, because, um, there's people that are on our committees that aren't residents, they work in East Hampton, so.
That's true, yeah.
It's like, we just have to have an interest in East Hampton, whether because of work or living or, you know.
Yeah, that, that one seems like, um, one that we wanna, would wanna definitely dig into a little bit. Because we'll want to figure out that, that correct way to phrase that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, Salem, you're.
Oops, he's frozen. Well, I mean, I feel like we have an appointment committee, so it's like, I feel like it shouldn't be restricted.
Um, so that's a good one.
You were frozen.
Cutting out?
You were cutting out, so. I would say we have like an appointment committee to vet people, so it's almost, I, I was like, I would hate to make it very restrictive at all. It's like, if someone comes forward, and it's just some random person on the internet who's like, you know, anti-vax and wants to join a committee, and they don't have nothing to do with East Hampton, like, just an example. But, you know, we could, we would not confirm their appointment, but to put restrictions seems like maybe unnecessary, since we have a vetting process.
Um, I'm just trying to figure out what, um, do you guys remember what section that is?
Uh, chapter two, article three.
Yeah.
Chapter two, okay, chapter two, article, yep, that's great.
A number of reasons why not be able to register to vote, da, 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 da.
Cause I think if we have a list of these that we, you know, because the, I mean, some of them are like the keeping of swine, the, you know,
Yeah.
the skinny dipping, like, these are like, we can, we can balance those pretty easy. But like, these ones I think are gonna be good to be able to dig into.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I don't mind kind of going through them and grouping them. Um, unless we're just doing that right now, kind of, we're pretty much doing that right now, but.
Well, if you want, if, I mean, uh, it would probably make sense, just as part of the minutes, maybe just, or, or on a separate thing to just say, okay, here are the ones that are like really easy to move out, and here are the ones we want to dig into a little bit more, so we can focus our attention in the right spot. But, I mean, I, I feel like we have a, a good start at least.
Yeah.
And, and maybe what we can do is we can, um, uh, for the next meeting, everybody can take a look and see if there's anything that we didn't catch, and, and, um, we can start separating those.
Yeah. What I could do is, I, I can take the report that we sent out, and just, if you want, I could do this, and just turn it into like a spreadsheet.
That'd be perfect.
Then we could decide like, which things are low hanging fruit, which things we should do later, which things are probably better for public safety. I mean, I know the public safety is also, and Salem, you're on both, right?
I'm on both.
Yeah.
We already said certain ones to public safety, though, because there was two, two sets, like, in the report, and there was a group, there were already groups for public safety, and they already went to public safety.
Oh, well, great.
Yep. We have, we have those in a separate pile.
Yeah, so.
So I'll just go back and find the ordinance pile.
Yeah, when you're grouping them, like, or when you're making the spreadsheet, like, you can also add a column, like, who we need to seek advisement from, like, who, what input, what stakeholders do we need to.
Right.
Yeah, good point.
What do we actually have to do? I'm just sort of sketch out a, a plan.
Sounds good. It's, it's funny, section eight point six, uh, sixty-two.
Yeah.
Needs updating, and I thought it said cornhole. I've had the, are we gonna make cornhole that East Hampton's official sport?
Coal hole, what is coal?
Coal hole, which I imagine is probably like a hole in the ground where you put your used coal, or where you stored your coal, or something like that. Yeah. So, all right, that's, that's great. I think that's, that's, um, a good start, and, um, I, I think, so the only other thing that we have on that isn't actively engaged, because we have Juneteenth public hearing coming up, um, and we have the joint hearing with the planning board working on the zoning. So the only other thing is the vacant storefront ordinance. Um, and Lindsay, have you been following that at all? Do you, do you know?
I would like an update. I've been following it some, but, um, I don't think I kept where it is last.
Okay, so just as the update, so we're in still the very preliminary stages of discussing it. Uh, basically, the EDIC had reached out to us, um, and they had an idea, they had been meeting on it, and so we put them on our agenda. Um, we suspended our rules so we could talk to them. And, um, you know, they had some really interesting ideas about vacant storefronts. And so we picked it up, and, um, we have a, like, a sample ordinance, but, you know, I think, you, one of the things that we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to like dig a little bit deeper into it, because we have, you know, COVID concerns. We have, um, you know, uh, I think it's our duty to make sure that it's right for East Hampton, um, that it's not just cookie cutter from another community, and, and so we have basically really just started to discuss, um, what that could look like. Uh, and so, you know, our, our next steps are gonna be to start looking at the, the content of the ordinance, brainstorming some ideas for, you know, potential, like, is there a fine? Is there, uh, you know, a, a fee to register these vacant storefronts? What, what could be the, um, reasons why people could be exempt from it? Um, you know, how long do people have to make sure they do something with the space? What happens if they don't? That kind of thing. And then, you know, bring back the EDIC and some of the stakeholders, some of the local businesses, and, and start having a collaborative path towards making something that works. Um, and I think all of us can agree that it's probably, uh, an important thing to be thinking about right now. So, um, do you have any questions?
No, I was reading up on it, and it was something, it was actually something I'd read about a few years ago, and I was, and I, I was glad to see that it came up, because we definitely have that issue, especially with our downtown thriving, and then there's certain obvious places that are just seeming to be happy in their vacant state.
That's like the, the happy in the vacant state is the thing that I think is, that I, I'm sort of caught up on with this is, like, I think this is a good idea, but, but these, like, a lot of these buildings, right? Someone's paying city taxes every year to just sit on this building and make it, and have it vacant. I mean, there's a difference, right? There's some places where you have a block with a, or you have a building with four storefronts, and three of them are occupied, and one of them is like maintained but has been vacant for a while. But then you have some buildings that have just been abandoned, that are like condemned and uninhabitable and unsafe. These are sort of, I, I do feel like these are slightly different things. I'm not saying that like, either one is great, but I do think we need to, it, it's, maybe you need, you need to just consider them slightly differently, but then the big question. What's that?
Well, I think like one, the first category you're mentioning, they're actually unsafe. I think they, you know, create unsafe situations. The other one is just more like, it's like, it's like impeding progress and other, like, public serving businesses to be there.
But then like, so then the other question that I have, though, is if somebody's willing to sit on a building and pay probably thousands of dollars of property taxes a year for a building that they're doing nothing with, like, what is the actual incentive that actually gets somebody to start thinking about that differently? That, that I guess is the thing that I, that, like, I don't have an answer to that, but I just sort of as a, like, earworm, like, that, that's just kind of like the thing that I've been stuck with, is like, I don't, I don't want to create something that, like, isn't, you know, we, we just give somebody an administrative task, but it's not actually convincing the building owners to actually do anything, anything differently.
I hear what you're saying, because like a hundred dollar fine, if they're paying thousands of dollars, is like, whatever. Um, I think part of it is, and I, I hate to use the word shaming, but like, the public recognition, like, if it becomes like a community desire, and you, and, you know, I don't know if that's gonna change things, but if it's like publicly acknowledged that this community would like you to not be holding this space for your storage at Main Street.
And that's actually, that is actually one of the, the strategies that kind of is considered a best practice, is for the city to have kind of a clearinghouse of the vacant properties, where, you know, people from the community can see, you know, they can go, and maybe it would be on our website, and they could see how long the property's been vacant, who owns it, you know, what, if it's for lease, what the rent would be, you know, that kind of stuff. So it would give people, and then, uh, another thing that I saw was a place within that context where people could submit ideas for things that could go there, you know, that they would want to do. Like, I want to, I would like to have a bakery there, you know, and then, almost like, um, bouncing ideas into the community of what they would love to see there, and then trying to find support in the community to like, bring that forward. Um, but Tom, I, I do think that you're absolutely right, there's gonna have to be a, a two-pronged approach. An approach for the buildings that are completely empty and are, um, and are habitually like vacant and basically blighted, right? And then, an approach for, you know, um, just vacant storefronts that we would love to see rented, but aren't necessarily a safety issue, or aren't necessarily a blight issue. Um, and, and I think that we might have.
You got it.
Have to. Like, um, you know, that could be like, having the city post that, um, because that could be, uh, am I unstable again?
You are, you're back. We, we got it.
Okay, cool. So, you know, I think that that could be part of it, is, um, because if someone, I mean, it would, it would be really interesting to me if someone's charging, you know, they have this three vacant storefronts all in a row, and two are like in the same ballpark, and one is like four thousand dollars more a month, you know, or something like that, and I'm trying to establish, ha, ha, trying to encourage people to have reasonable rents, and maybe encouraging them to lower the rent a little bit, but that would have to be, it's like the carrot and the stick approach, right, which we talked about last time.
Yeah.
So, you know, this is gonna have to be, we're gonna have to put our thinking caps on for this one, it's gonna be interesting, I think.
I, I have a question. Has there been any communication with these business owners? Yes.
Yep. So the EDIC reached out to all the business owners that, I believe, uh, all of them that had vacant storefronts, and, and basically threw this idea out there, and talked to them about that. And so, I, I believe that is part of the, the, uh, information that they sent over to us.
Okay, so.
But I can double check on that. If, I, I'm trying to remember, I don't really remember reading any responses. So I think it might have just, I think it might have just been like, um, them sending it out and, um, and letting know they were looking at it, but Omar has his hand up, so. Good evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. I, I know a little bit about it, and some, uh, building owners received the letter after, after those meetings was done. So, that, that's possibly, none of them got response, uh, because that, they got the letter, uh, the notification after the EDIC met.
So, you know, and, and basically what that means is that we can, um, pick up where they left off and reach out to those, those building owners again as well. Because I, I mean, honestly, this should be something done in, in a, in a collaborative way with the business community. We don't, you know, um, I think all of us can acknowledge that, and, and I think the business owners would acknowledge that if we have thriving things happening in our downtown, then it's gonna encourage more activity at all downtown businesses, so. Um, you know, I, I think bringing everybody on board to, to really try to, uh, and, and I also think that maybe the Chamber of Commerce, too, would be another um, entity to be able to like work with us on this, to, um, at least be involved in discussions, you know? Tom, you have a thought?
I, so I guess where I, where I am on this, like, one of, just from, from my, putting my like economist hat on for a second, what I really want to understand is, like, why are these buildings vacant? Like, because you'd think that you'd want rent.
Yeah.
Or whatever, like, you'd think, is it like a tax thing? Is it, like, I could understand, for instance, like, uh, where like Coco used to be, right? I could understand that, uh, building owner being like, well, I want another high-end restaurant in here. And no one's looking to start a high-end restaurant in the middle of Omicron, so I'm just gonna sit on this for a little while until I find, like, the perfect tenant. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I don't necessarily think that they need to put like a Spirit Halloween or something in there, you know, just to keep it, uh, occupied until, uh, you, you know, like, like, I don't know that that's necessarily, like, but, you know, like, I, like, I think that there's, that's where, where I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, like, I don't know if I fully understand the decisions that are being made here, and until I do, it's hard for me to really understand what sort of carrots and or sticks should be leveraged to get the results that we want.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you're saying, Tom, so I would like to just, I don't know if it's like have a public, I don't know if it's a public hearing or what it is, but like invite, and say, we want to discuss the reasons, and we want, be, while we're making this policy, and like, if we could get them to come in front of us, not like in a collaborative state, like, this, like, our goal is to have a thriving East Hampton with opportunities for different businesses to move in. And I think it's pretty simple to understand why we wouldn't want just, like, obviously dilapidated businesses, but just also main business just, just used as storage. And, um, you're right, like, maybe, well, maybe we'll learn something in that conversation, because otherwise, I'm just guessing, like, for that storage situation, I'm like, it's probably, maybe it's just inertia, like, he's been storing a lot of stuff there a long time, you know, his tenants can park there in the parking lot. It's not broken, don't fix it. I don't know, you know, but maybe if we really invited them to be part of the progress in East Hampton, um, started that way, you know, my optimistic spirit.
I, I think that's great. I, I think that's a good idea, and, and I'm happy, you know, I think maybe what we can do is, um, between now and our, and the meeting where we decide to dig into this, this particular piece, is to maybe try to dig into Tom's question, which is, you know, why are these places potentially empty? And, I mean, we could even open it up to, you know, like, what, what I, you know, what do community members, what would they love to see in these places, you know? Cause, um, that's, that's an interesting tact, too. There might be a great idea out there that a landlord just hasn't heard yet, you know? And so, and now, Tom, for your piece, do you think, besides having kind of like a, an open meeting where we allow people to come in and just speak on this, and, and share their thoughts, um, from your perspective, because I think that's a really important piece that you brought up. Do you, do, can you think of any ways that we can kind of dive into that and, and start to understand that better?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can try and look into it a bit myself, because like, I think we, I, I love this community conversation idea, but just for what it's worth, I also think no one's gonna show up at like a public meeting and be like, yeah, well, I actually can write this loss off on my taxes, and that makes more sense than renovating it, so.
Yeah.
Like.
Well, we know, I mean, we, you know, we know from North Hampton, that that is probably one of the things, you know, and, and like, and I think that's, that's probably, you know, the, part of the catalyst of this, is we don't want to see these properties sitting vacant for years and years on end.
Or if someone's like, yeah, I'm just speculating on this, and I think the market's gonna be better in two years than it is right now. Like, no one's just gonna say that. Um, I do want to hear what they do have to say, but I just think it's one of those things where like, there, it could be that there'd be some other stuff there. Um, what I can do, I mean, I, I can, you know, I, I, like, I've, I've got resources in the policy world that I can reach out to, professional connections who, who might have some ideas about this, and I can just do a little bit of, do a little bit of research, and it could be that the EDIC honestly understands this dynamic on a level that we don't, because, you know, they gave the presentation about the ordinance itself, but they might have some, some knowledge beyond that, so just maybe bringing them in for another chat might be, might be a good thing.
So maybe, so how about this as far as like timeline, um, how about for the next meeting that where we focus on this piece? Um, we invite EDIC, um, and, and kind of get some perspective from them. Um, maybe even look at the sample ordinance and spitball some ideas that we might, you know, each of us might have for that, and bounce it off them, see, you know, like, oh, what, what was the reasoning behind this? Like, we think that the registration fee should be six hundred dollars, and that if they don't do that, there should be a hundred dollar monthly fee or something, right, right? So just like spitball some things that we could, that we could bounce off of them, and then, once we kind of have that piece in place, then we could, then we could start looking at this community perspective to try to invite some of the business owners in to get their perspective, and, and see how this could potentially help or harm them. Um, and, and that should, hopefully, after those two things, we should be, you know, positioned to start making some, some progress towards uh, language and direction and that type of thing. That seem reasonable enough?
I absolutely agree. Can I make one, one last point on this?
Please.
This is a little bit nitpicky, but I do think when we talk about this, what we're talking about here is rarely in East Hampton, although not never. in East Hampton, although not never, business owners, like most of these businesses rent. These are landowners and building owners. Um, and that's not universally true, but I think if you were to take a poll, I think probably the ma- the strong majority of businesses in, in East Hampton rent their space. And so the folks that we're talking about here are, I mean, I guess landlord-ing is a business. So you could say that they're business owners in that respect, but it's really like that they're the, the people that we're talking about, like if we talk to the, the folks at the Chamber of Commerce, like I think that's a great perspective to get, but I doubt that commercial landlords are generally members of the Chamber of Commerce.
That's a good point.
Although some of the business owners do own other businesses. So I don't know if they're in there for their business. I don't know.
Yeah, it's true. There could be someone who bought a building and they have a business in one part of it and they rent the other parts out or whatever. Yeah, or they have a business and then they just bought a building separately. Yeah, there's all sorts of complicated relationships that people have here.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you know, as we kind of move through this, we might see that there's pieces that we want to like zero in on and, and focus on now. And there might be pieces like um, the, that we want to wait on and we want to maybe take a slower tact on. But, uh, yeah, so I, here's what I'll do is, um, I'll reach out to the EDIC and see if they can come for our next meeting on this. And, um, that, and, and I think for our homework, if we just take a look at the sample ordinance and you know, spitball some ideas, how we could separate those commercial big, um, like vacant, long-term vacant, I guess, places uh, versus the, the short-term like Coco-ish, you know? You want to get a high-end restaurant there? That makes sense. Like, of course you're not gonna rent it to Spirit Halloween, right? Like, of course. So I think that, I think that's a good, a good place for us to, to go. Um, let me just get my calendar out here. Are you guys good to start maybe looking at a couple of dates?
Yeah, sure. Are Thursdays what we're gonna do now or?
Um, Thursdays are, it depends. Like I can be, I'm pretty flexible, but I'm not. So March is gonna free up for me a lot. So like, once I get to March, I'm gonna be like super flexible. So we can meet a lot in March if you guys want.
I'm cool with it. Wednesdays are always bad for me and Mondays are usually bad for me, but
Did you say Mondays?
Yeah, because that's what my Tuesdays and Thursdays usually work.
Yeah, okay. So like, um, for example, Thursday the seventeenth, it looks like I'm pretty, I'm, uh, February, um, I'm free. I don't know if that works for you all.
Yes.
Do you want to, do you want to put that one in for the, um, the ordinance review piece? Okay. All right. So we'll do Thursday the seventeenth, six o'clock for you guys or six thirty or something?
It's all good for me.
Whatever you say, six, seven?
Yeah, I, I, is, is there any chance we can do six thirty on, on Thursday?
It's fine with me.
Is that too late?
It's fine for me. No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna put that at six thirty and I'm gonna earmark it for, um, the ordinance review.
Cool.
Cool. Very good. And let's see, um, that puts, that puts me into March for, for the vacant storefront. Is that okay with you guys?
That's fine with me. One thing I would just like to say, I had a conversation with Jeff Bag pretty recently, and he said that the planning department is relatively close to coming back to us with a revised solar ordinance.
Oh, okay, good.
So just in terms of things that we are going to have coming at us, that is a thing. And, um, there's no reason we can't work on those in, in tandem, but that potentially could be a, a big lift. So something you might want to keep in, keep in mind.
Good to know, good to know. Um, how about, uh, does March third work for you guys? To, to try to get the EDIC in for us? How, how's that, March third work for you? Okay. All right. So uh, and I'm gonna put that at six thirty again, if that's okay. And I'm gonna invite EDIC. Great. All right. Sounds pretty good. And so, uh, just a reminder, uh, March eighth, we have the continued public hearing with the planning board. Okay, um, so I wanted to make sure you guys had that. And I think that we're probably in a okay spot. How do you guys feel?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. So I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn then. Okay, we're motion in a second. And let's see, Tom Peak? Lindsay Rothschild. I vote I as well. That was a very efficient. Thanks, guys. I appreciate that.